Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The agenda for this meeting can be downloaded at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Preciting over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the June 20th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Kater.
Here.
Vice Chair Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner Bashir Tosh. Commissioner Biddle.
I will note Commissioner Biddle.
She had to leave.
Oh.
Commissioner Core.
Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the city's planning division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
In keeping with the city council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on Madam Clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. Madam Clerk?
Agenda Item 3A, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Please note, if you are here for consent, public hearing Item 5A through 5E, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak at a later date, a later time. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Non-agenda Item 3B, Public Statements.
Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 4, Consent Calendar Items.
Please note, all items listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by a single, by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said item unless staff or a commissioner requests specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving consent item 4A?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Core, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Coman. Commissioners, please cast your votes.
Okay, let's try it again.
All right. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Should we roll call?
Yeah, it's not showing up on my screen.
Yes, please.
Chair Kater.
Yes.
Vice Chair Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner Core.
Yes.
Commissioner Coman.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Bashir Tosh, Biddle, and Neal absent.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. Please note, if the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing Ms. King, it's been a while. If I have a conflict on one, do I state it now or do I ask if any of your items are removed before?
You can state it now.
Okay. I will just note tonight, I have a conflict of interest due to source of income on Item 5D and will be abstaining from voting. At this, with that said, at this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a public, consent public hearing item? Seeing no members of the public, does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? At this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed incorporating all staff memorandum and revise staff recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Can we clarify that motion because you have to be excluded from one of those? Can we separate that one out?
Commissioner Coman, so the way that it breaks down is that Commissioner, Chair Kater can vote on all the items except for 5D, and so the notation will be that it's a four, is it potentially a four, four in favor vote for 5A, 5B, and 5C, and then 5D will be a three-person vote.
All right, so can we have a motion to approve 5, 5A through E less D?
We can do that.
That way he can vote for the ones that...
And then do a separate vote?
All right.
We can do that, yes.
So may I get a motion to approve items 5A through 5C and recommend that Item 5B re-continued?
And 5E as well.
Yeah, did I say D or say E?
Sounded like C.
Oh, let me start a, la, 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 all right. Make it a motion to approve staffs, approve items, for staff's approval, recommendation to approve items 5A, B, and C, and staff's recommendation that 5E be continued to the regularly scheduled meeting of July 18th?
And your motion includes 5E as well? E is an elephant.
Did I not say that again? Sorry. C, oh yeah, so yes, and Item 5E, may I get a motion?
So I would make that motion what he said.
All right, Commissioner Coman, may I have a second?
And I'm second in the motion that he said.
Commissioner Strickland, commissioners, please cast your votes.
We'll go ahead and just do roll call.
Perfect.
Chair Kater.
Yes.
Vice Chair Strickland.
Yes.
Commissioner Core.
Yes.
Commissioner Coman.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Bashir Tosh, Biddle, and Neal absent.
Okay, so now we will now, we will now do a roll call vote on, on Item 5B?
5D has a dog.
Sorry, why is this, yeah, on Item 5D with myself abstaining.
So I'd make a motion to approve Item 5D.
I'll second it.
I think you, Commissioner Coman, with Commissioner Core. Commissioners, except me, please cast your votes. A roll call.
We're going to try doing the electronic voting. Motion passes with Commissioners Bashir Tosh, Biddle, and Neal absent, and Chair Kater abstaining.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 6, Non-consent Public Hearing Items.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I would like to explain how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all of those in favor have spoken. Each side will be, then be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Please note, individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If preferred, written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the, to the commission. Please remember to be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report on Item 6A?
Yes, thank you, and just for the audience, so what just transpired is if you were here for Item 5A, which is an extension of time for best intended track map, or 5B, a specific plan amendment, or 5C, a revised plan development review, or 5D, the zone change, those items were all approved. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, but there will be no discussion on those items. And then 5E will be moved to July for further discussion. But again, you're welcome to stay as we discuss Item 6A, which is a conditional use permit for a poultry slaughtering and processing wholly within a building. This project's site is located just south of Monterey Street between Sacramento and Alta Vista. It is zoned M1, which is light industrial. Some of the uses allowed in the M1 district include a bottling plant, concrete batch plant if it's less than two yards, truck repairing and overhauling, and any use that's allowed in our neighborhood commercial and regional commercial zones. Also allowed in the M1 zone but with approval of a conditional use permit includes equestrian establishments, truck stops, and the request before your commission tonight, which is a livestock slaughtering and processing wholly within a building. This project's site contains two parcels. The parcel on the west right now is currently really an undeveloped parking lot. If approved, the developer will construct a 13-space parking lot, and then there is an existing 4,000-square-foot building that will be used as a neighborhood market, which will have to go through tenant improvements. This is the floor plan of the neighborhood market, approximately 2,300 square feet of sales area, 900 square feet of, for a meat department and storage of that meat, and a 735-square-foot poultry preparation, preparation area. Again, this is a Mediterranean grocery and meat market, which is going to really specialize in halal chicken, and halal describes what is fit and proper to eat for Muslims, and is a term used to describe a wide array of food and drink beverages. There are similarities with how kosher food is prepared for the Jewish faith in that both of these food laws have their roots in scripture, the Torah for kosher and the Quran for halal. There's, there is a condition that there will be no more than 100 live poultry on this site at any given time, and then live poultry must be housed in a continuous climate-controlled area. In other words, there is an open space backyard, but there will be no housing of chickens in that area. It will not be permitted. There was some public outreach done by the applicant, and the applicant is in the audience and can describe that, and please note, we do have translators available. And then we did our staff-initiated public outreach through our 300-foot notification radius, posting of the site with signs and on the newspaper, and we received no comments in opposition. Conditional use permit shall only be granted if it is found that the use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, that the use is in harmony with the elements and objectives of the general plan, and if those findings can be made, which staff believes they can, the issuance of the CUP may contain conditions that the operator must comply with during the, during the operation of the use and prior to initiating that use. And those conditions are part of the resolution that was provided to your commission for Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that you adopt the resolution and suggested findings approving the conditional use permit, subject to the listed conditions of approval, and that completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
He doesn't have anything to add to it, so we'll just leave it as it is.
Seeing no requests to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Seeing no one in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, does any commissioner have any questions for the public or staff on this item? Please remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, only time to ask questions. Commissioner Strickland.
Just a question for staff. I don't know if I asked it in my earlier communication, where did the 100 number come from? Was that based on applicant's expected use?
That number was provided by the applicant, that is correct.
Okay. I think that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Seeing no other commissioner questions, and as there were no speakers in favor or opposition, I will forego the rebuttal period, close the public hearing, and move to the commission for comment and action. Any commissioners like to start us off? Commissioner Strickland.
Thanks. I, yeah, short, short comment. I had a list of questions I asked earlier this week for the applicant staff, and I just wanted to note that I, it was a pretty significant list of questions to ask the engineer on the project. They responded back to all of that pretty quick, within, well within 24 hours, very thorough response, very thorough plan, what they're going to be doing. I like where it's going in at. I like that it's going to have a community market, I like that it helps a very important section of our population, so if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to approve with the CUP in mind.
A motion to approve the CUP, right? Yeah, okay, we will note that motion and then open up for any other commissioner comments.
Just to clarify, it's basically your, a motion for staff's recommendation.
Yes.
Are there any other commissioners who'd like to provide comments? I would just like to note, it's exciting to see grocery opportunities and access to food move into an underserved neighborhood, and I am excited to see food off, more diverse food offerings in our community, services being provided in areas that are often overlooked, and would agree, I mean, I will, as chair, defer to the commission for a second, but also am in support of the CUP.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Or second the motion.
Second the motion, all right. So we have a motion, Christopher Strickland, a second by Commissioner Core. I showed my cards already, and so let's go ahead and cast our votes.
Motion passes with Commissioners Bashir Tosh, Biddle, and Neal absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda Item 7, New Business.
Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us with the new business item? Or Mr. Archer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Archer, Public Works, thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Kater, members of the commission. My name is Paul Archer, I'm a civil engineer four with the Public Works Department here for the city of Bakersfield, and I will be presenting the fiscal year 2425 Capital Improvement Program for you and requesting a finding of consistency with the general plan and a recommendation of approval for a resolution stating such. The presentation's going to briefly highlight the one-time dollars budgeted by the city for the upcoming fiscal year, and then we'll go more in-depth on the public work side. I won't really go into dollars and fund sources specifically, but I'd like to highlight that next year, our capital improvement program is, totals $172 million, with 84 million of those dollars coming from state and federal sources. So I think this really highlights staff's dedication to the responsibility over public funds and highlights that we are dedicated to finding state and federal funds to leverage local tax dollars to complete our projects. Just a quick overview of some of these, I'd like to highlight the Jastro Park improvements through the Wreckin Parks Department, which is some improvements to the amphitheater at Jastro Park. Also, Development Services will be doing some enhancements to their plan check and permitting software, as well as economic development with some one-time dollars for affordable housing program through the PSVS program. Quickly as well, going through arena, water resources, and fire department. Fire department will just be making some, some repairs to some facilities, as well as a purchase of a vehicle. Water resources, typical water ag and domestic projects that they do every year, and then the arena and convention center, doing some minor repairs to the arena, ice center, and convention center. Now for the Public Works Department. With the exception of 18th and 19th, the four bottom projects are all roadway widening projects, so especially in the southwest, looking to widen some of those roads, adding additional lanes. We won't be doing curb, gutter, sidewalk, but we will be providing access for pedestrians and bicyclists along all of those projects. The 18th and 19th improvements project is Phase 1 of construction. Right now, we have 2.2 million in CMAC funds, a federal funding source, and we'll be looking to do improvements from L to O for that project. These pictures are some renderings that we have for that project and what we intend These pavement rehabs are SB 1, Senate Bill 1, and RSTP, state and federal funds. We use state and federal funds to do pavement rehab projects on some of the major corridors that we have around the city. It'll include traffic striping treatments to address bicycle access along these corridors. This is a relatively busy slide, so I apologize, but it highlights our commitment in the past few years to street lighting. The top portion shows kind of what we did last year in terms of designing and installing streetlights. Next year, we'll be focused on Bell Terrace and Terrace Way, just south of the 58, near P Street, or sorry, near, near H Street, and we'll be utilizing CDBG dollars, federal HUD dollars, leveraging local dollars to complete those improvements. I want to briefly go over complete streets projects here, and, and I'll talk about complete streets generally through council and management's, just to kind of discuss council and management's intent on these. Staff has received pretty specific guidance through the Multimodal and Traffic Safety Committee on enhancing our streets to provide better access for pedestrians and bicyclists, as well as providing traffic safety improvements through traffic calming measures throughout the city. In addition, these projects include stormwater, pavement rehabs, landscaping, and streetlighting improvements. So it's really the gambit of, of right-of-way improvements for a lot of these corridors, and that's why the dollar amounts end up being so large. Really, the genesis for these complete streets projects, though, is, is in economic development for areas that, that are kind of seeing onesie-twosie developments along the corridors or older corridors, where we can come in and put in a lot of public dollars to provide for, and really develop these corridors and provide for an area to have developers invest private dollars into those, so, so creating an attractive corridor for them to come in and develop along these corridors. So going through this list of projects, Chester Avenue from 58, this is not from 58 to 204, I apologize again, it's from 58 to Truxton. This is a raised grant project, and this should be advertising in July, I believe. So we should be seeing some construction starting relatively quickly. H Street is from 58 to 204. It's about an $18 million project right now, and that will be, that is in design, looking to advertise that in spring of 2025. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, again, grant program, TCC, state funding, as well as a federal appropriation. This is in design now, probably will end up going to advertise in the late winter to start in spring for construction. And then Baker Street, complete streets. This is a continuation of the, of the ASIC project, that is, the Renaissance at Baker project through Kern Housing Authority, I believe, and we're going to be doing some public improvements in accompaniment of that project. Urban greening and beautification, this includes the interchange at 5899. This will be a phased project, but we'll be doing a lot of landscaping, hardscaping, as well as some artistic items along the, along the corridors. The Kentucky Urban Greening Project is also an ASIC project. It's, it's a continuation of that bike path along Kentucky Street, going to Baker Street at the west and Mount Vernon at the east side of that project. So we'll continue, we'll lengthen that, that bike path project, providing obviously trees and plants along the entire thing. Moving on to TRIP, we have a couple of projects that we're starting new on, well, I guess, continuing, but, but for me, they are. Seventh Movement is the eastbound 58 to northbound connector. We are out to bid right now. We'll be opening in early July, late June, early July to start construction on that project. And then we are moving to what's called PSNE, so that's 60% to 100% design for the eighth movement, which is southbound 99 to westbound 58. We'll be advertising the RFP for Design Consultant Services in early June, July as well, and looking to receive state funds for that design as well. Sewer and storm drain improvements, these are your standard scheduled improvements to sewer and storm drain systems. We've highlighted some of those projects here. Engineering really works with operations on these projects to identify which areas need improvement, best practices, as well as what we need to improve on as engineers to make sure that we're putting, you know, the correct construction methods or equipment, like pumps into these, what, what's worked and what hasn't worked. So we really work together with operations to make sure we put out a good project on Facility improvements, I'd like to highlight EV fleet infrastructure here. As many of you know, state airboard is requiring fleets to convert to zero emission vehicles. That's not just as easy as purchasing a vehicle, though, we have to look at the infrastructure behind that. We have to first look at the operational needs of all the departments, see what those charging needs turn into in terms of power requirements through PG&E, and then looking to make those improvements at all of our sites around the city. So it is quite an extensive process, but we're working to, to complete that so that we can make that transition per state requirements. And lastly, traffic and other CIPs. Here, I will highlight the intersection control evaluations, where we'll look at some existing intersections to see what we can do to improve those intersections, potentially do roundabouts at some of them, as well as the bridge deck improvements, where we're looking to do some better asset management on our bridges, really look at those and see what needs to be implemented. really look at those and see what needs to be improved, what we can do in-house, and what we program for future years. That is my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Strickland. No, go ahead. I will just say thank you for the presentation. Look forward to asking questions.
Just two questions on rehabbing. I know complete streets is really for more multimodal, so it's improvements of non-existing. For complete streets, are you able to add bike lanes to existing?
On complete streets or on pavement rehab?
Sorry, on just the rehabs.
We typically do. That's what we've been doing of late. So when we repave the entire road section as it exists now, we adjust the pavement markings to provide either bike lanes where they don't exist, or wider bike lanes than they currently are.
Okay, yeah, because I saw, I think on Brim Hall and Callaway, that was a recent one, that looks really, really nice. So I was kind of hoping, so rehab is that kind of rework, right? That's not necessarily complete streets?
Correct.
Got it. And then on the EV fleet infrastructure, it's 10 years to replace all the vehicles. I know that City Council's like talking about what that structure is going to look like. Is that, is this kind of the end step with that, is that you're going to look at all facilities at where it needs to have EV chargers installed? But this is just for city-owned property? It's not public EV chargers?
Correct. That's where we're at right now. We have some public chargers throughout the city, obviously at the parking garage. There's some here at City Hall South, different parks around the city and different parking lots throughout the city that the city owns. But this is specifically for fleet, to look at, you know, the operations of the different departments, whether it's Public Works, or Development Services, or the Fire Department, whoever, and look at all of the different sites that we have vehicles at, and how they need to be charged, how quickly they need to be charged, and what the demand is going to be, so that we can then construct those improvements.
Are any construction improvements planned for the upcoming year, or is that just designed for next year and then implementation after?
I'll say it depends, because we don't know exactly what we're going to need. So if there's something that's relatively simple, we can probably incorporate that into next year's budget. But it definitely depends, because we haven't done that deep dive into not only our infrastructure, but PG&E's infrastructure as well. Obviously, they won't give us that information readily, but we have to really look at that and say, what is our service at this site? What do we need? And then can your service conductors to our site provide that power for us?
Yeah, that's all I had. Great job, though. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair Kuter. Thank you, Mr. Archer, for your report. I appreciate it. I guess my first question is, what is exactly being asked of this commission? Is this, what are we being asked to do?
So this commission's responsibility, if I understand it, is to find that the CIP program is consistent with the Metro Bakersfield General Plan, and then recommend approval of a resolution to council stating as such.
And are these items that have already been approved by council?
They have not been approved by council. They have been seen by council, and we are anticipating that, but they have not been officially approved by council.
Are these being recommended by council?
A lot of the projects are being recommended by council members throughout the city. A lot of them are projects that we are recommending as staff. It's a combination.
Okay, thank you. So I was a little confused. On one of your very first slides, you had capital improvements, and you listed a bunch of projects that, in the business world, we wouldn't really consider them capital improvements. They were, they're, you know, system upgrades and that kind of thing that we would normally consider a capital improvement. Is there a different way that Public Works looks at capital improvements?
So on the public side, we have our operating budget, which obviously you aren't seeing. We have our capital improvement, our one-time dollars. So those one-time dollars are all included here, whether it's system upgrades, or Public Works' capital improvement projects, as you're familiar with them.
So it's more of a one-time expenditure, not necessarily an improvement to a capital asset?
Correct.
The list of pavement rehab for the community seems to be a lot of projects east of 99 and very few west of 99. Is there some kind of priority that's given to these projects?
We determine our pavement rehab projects based on the PCI. We have the Payment Condition Index, where we itemize roads that need to be improved, if they're going to be improved in-house by our Streets Department, or by the engineering side, by a contractor. That really depends on the size of the road and the scope of the improvements. I'd challenge that we're kind of even. A lot of our pavement rehabs are happening on the west of the 99. A lot of our complete streets are happening on the east of the 99. I think that speaks to the fact that a lot of our roads east of the 99 don't have things like sufficient curb, gutter, sidewalk, bike lanes, landscaping, or street lighting. And they have old infrastructure, whereas on the west side, a lot of that is existing. So we can get by with doing a pavement rehab with existing infrastructure that's generally in good condition.
Because there's a significant amount of work needs to be done on Ming Avenue from Highway 99 to at least at least Gosford, and the same with White Lane from maybe not, maybe a lesser degree, but White Lane from 99 to Gosford. Are there any considerations for those roads?
There are. So we show Ming Avenue here. I know this is west of Gosford. But we do have some projects that are west of the 99.
So you have Ming Avenue there from Buena Vista to Gosford, but nothing in that zone that goes through all that commercial from 99 to Gosford?
Not right now. And I can look at our future CIP program. I don't have that handy right now, but I can look at that and see when we're planning to rehab Ming Avenue from Gosford East.
Thank you. The other thing, I saw a lot of very colorful drawings for some of these complete street programs in areas that, this is a good example, you know, it's real pretty. But the question becomes, we have a tendency to do these kind of projects in town, and then we don't maintain them. So within 10 years, they're run down again. What efforts are going to be made to maintain these very extravagant improvements on these very heavily trafficked boulevards?
So we're working at the Public Works Department to ensure that our landscaping is resilient, because we are through having native trees, drought-tolerant trees, as well as not putting as much turf down, using some DG to add color in there, but not necessarily having turf that needs to be mowed weekly or however often. But we are working to install landscaping or hardscaping that requires a little bit less maintenance, but also working with the Parks Department to ensure that they are aware of the projects that we're doing, and that they are committed to maintaining them.
You had two projects in here, and you talked about them in a cycle format. Basically, it's the 5899 Forever Project. You mentioned this as Seventh Movement and an Eighth Movement. Have these been, is this the way this was planned? Or was it planned all from the beginning that we're going to spend five years doing this overpass and not put in a southbound connector?
I can't necessarily speak to that. I'm sure Mr. Topete could speak to a little bit of the history on that. But this was the plan from the beginning in terms of where the connectors go, and the order of improvements.
Because my frustration has always been, and I guess I can't comment, right? We're just asking questions now, so okay. I will stick to questions.
Well, this isn't a hearing. You can comment away.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
We're all amongst friends, yeah.
My frustration has always been that I moved here in 1994, and they've been doing work on that intersection, 99 and 58, ever since I moved here, and it never ends. It's, you know, if you drive through it at sunrise, there's so many lane changes on 58 eastbound, you can't tell where to drive, because they burned it off, and they scraped it off, and they put new lines. When's it going to end? I see somebody there that wants to jump in. If you want to pass a football, man, you can.
Good evening, Commissioners. Luis Topete, Assistant Public Works Director. I don't have the specific answer to your question as to when is it going to end, but you asked before if it was planned this way. So with the TRIP program that I was part of since 2006, the TRIP program had all these projects scheduled, and we designed it with the help of Caltrans. Caltrans is the owner of the facilities, the freeways. So through the funding that came from the federal government, we scheduled all these projects. Now, the Seventh and the Eighth Movement were not part of those projects that were initially scheduled. However, with our partnership with Caltrans and KernCOG, we were able to secure more money after the TRIP program while we were in construction of the Centennial. So that was a really good opportunity to come up with a design for the Seventh Movement, and that is already designed, and as Paul mentioned, is bidding right now. Bid opening in a couple of weeks, and we will be in construction here in probably a month and a half or two months. Well, a little bit more than that. We have to award it first, and then go into construction probably by late summer. But that, so that's how those two projects came about, through our coordination with Caltrans. Now, the Eighth Movement also receives some funding. It's a grant from TICIP, federal state money, for the design. Construction, we still don't have the funding, but we're applying for, well, actually, Caltrans and KernCOG are applying for additional funding. But we were tasked to move forward with the design with the available funding that we have. As a matter of fact, next week, we're going to have the California Transportation Commission allocate the money for that, for the design. So that's, and that's why it seems like it's a never-ending project, because sometimes it's our own projects from TRIP, sometimes it's projects from Caltrans. They did some reconstruction of 99 to Guadaveta, actually, and same on 58. And now we're starting this other two projects. So that's why, I mean, I get it. We get the comments from the public that it seems like it's never end. But it's not just one project. It's one project after the next and after the next, which is not necessarily a bad thing. Our facility was ignored for many, many years. So it seems like the last 10, 15 years is where there's an influx of funding to enhance our transportation system in Bakersfield.
What is the timing as far as completion of these two movements?
The Seventh Movement, it's got an 18-month duration for construction if everything goes perfect. Big disclaimer. And then the Eighth Movement, again, is in design. It should take maybe a year to design. But then there are some properties that need to be acquired for the construction, and that's a little bit more unknown as to how long it's going to take to acquire the properties. And in the meantime, Caltrans and KernCOG are looking for additional funding for the construction. That will be a very expensive project. As you can see in blue, that is the bridge that is going to go over Stockdale and eventually connect to Centennial. So we're looking at a probably $50 to $60 million project, so a lot of funding that we have to be lucky and successful to get.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. I appreciate it. I have one last question for Mr. Archer regarding traffic calming. That's a popular buzzword now, and I've seen some of the traffic calming that you guys have put around town. And it looks like you're just creating traffic jams.
The intent of traffic calming is to slow people down. So we install infrastructure, whether it's striping, or speed humps, or various methods to slow people down, and to create safer corridors to interact with bicyclists and pedestrians. That's the intent of traffic calming.
I've had a conversation with your department head, Mr., I'm stuck, I'm sorry, I always mess up his name, but regarding the improvements on Nile Street, and the inverse, switching around where you park versus where the bike lane is. Normally, people park against the curb, and then the bike lane is then, and then you have a lane. In that particular corridor, there was some experiment with moving, putting the bike lane against the curb, and then moving the parking out in the middle of the street. Is that going to be something that's going to continue to be done? I just question why we do things that make people change the way they behave.
Okay, so that project, as Mr. Straklous has probably told you, was a demonstration project for a much larger project along both Niles and Monterey. Our intent on that project is to reduce both corridors from three travel lanes to two travel lanes. We won't be putting the bicycle lane on asphalt level. We'll be bringing that up to sidewalk level. So where people park will be against a curb, but it will be in the current location that they are on that demonstration project. It won't feel like you're parking in the middle of the road, because you'll be against the curb, but you'll be a little bit further away from your property or your house when you park. I know in talking, I've walked the corridor, knocked on doors, and spoken to people. I think generally, people understand what our intent was in doing that. It wasn't to provide 2,000 feet of bike lane. It was to demonstrate the reduction of the travel lanes through that intersection to try to slow people down and increase safety for people crossing the street. So if you look at it from that lens, you can see that the crosswalks went from 60-something feet from curb ramp to curb ramp, now to about 22 feet. So obviously, a much safer crossing there for people who are trying to get across Niles and Monterey, which is already very difficult. Our intent is to do that throughout the corridor, to create safer crossings along the corridor, to allow people to get to school, get to work, get to their friend's house, get to the market safer.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Cor.
I just want to get started with thanking you. It was a very informative presentation. I know it's kind of frustrating for people, especially on this slide, 58 and 99. I moved here three years ago, and I'm like, when is it going to be done? But as you mentioned, you're getting more funding, city is growing, and then you guys are making the infrastructure better. I just have one question in addition to Mr. Coleman's question. So this CIP plan is not approved by the City Council yet. Is there any chances of them adding more projects to the plan? And if we approve this plan today, will this come back to the commission again?
Your action tonight is to show that the CIP is consistent with the general plan. It will not be returning to your planning commission. City Council, obviously, is ultimate authority. They could add or subtract from the CIP if they so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cor. I'll round this out. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I think it's really exciting to see. Having been on the commission now since 2018, our city's definition of what public improvements look like is really exciting. I would contend with Commissioner Coleman that if cars in our city travel 20 miles an hour, we wouldn't need elevated separated bike lanes. We wouldn't need some of these safety protections. safety precautions. So part of the speed we allow residents is why some of these active interventions are needed, you know. I, I just, a couple of questions for you. It's, to me, it's, it's, it's notable the, the amount of complete street projects currently under development. I mean, you have Monterey-Niles, you have 18th Street, 19th Street, Chester, H Street, Martin Luther King Boulevard, and I think I missed one.
Niles-Monterey and Monitor Street as well.
And Monitor, yeah. And so is this sort of an ongoing effort that this starts to become more standard practice? Or is this, are these kind of moments in time with unique funding opportunities? Or do you think, is the city moving towards this being an ongoing effort?
It's definitely an ongoing effort. So we have resolution and ordinance through council to incorporate complete streets to all street projects that we do. So by law, we're required to do that. Whether it includes the complete corridor in improvements, I think depends on funding sources and availability, but we will look to incorporate complete streets and provide for access to, for pedestrians and bicyclists for every street improvement project that we do.
Fantastic. Yeah. And I just, again, would applaud. I think other commissioners have said it. The restriping effort, something as simple as repaving a road and striping in a way that provides safer roads, to me, is a, is a great worthwhile effort. So thank you for doing that. I think another question I had was the lighting program because I think there was a lighting study done maybe a year or two ago, found that our streets are chronically underlit from recommendations. I will note Cedar and Air are both in my neighborhood and it's, it's transformative to walk at night, those streets versus the other adjacent streets. And so, you know, 23, 24 looked like a lot of kind of pilot projects, interventions is, and then 25 was a little bit vague as far as kind of implementation. Can you discuss kind of at a city scale, how the city is approaching meeting satisfactory lighting levels?
Absolutely. So the issue that we have with lighting projects is that they're very expensive. Even when we do these corridor enhancement projects, they eat up about a quarter of the, of the total cost of the project. We are looking to do some other innovatives, innovative concepts, whether it be solar lighting or things like that. It historically hasn't done well in Bakersfield, but we're looking to see if, if different manufacturers and better products have come out recently. But we are, we are getting the input from council. We're getting the input from residents on where they feel that we need to add additional lighting. We have a running list currently of projects that we're trying to complete. And really, we, we're, like I said, our, our staff is dedicated to improving our city. And whether we are driving around and looking for issues that we have to solve, or they come into us, we're, we're doing our best to solve those as efficiently as possible.
Is there, do you see an annual allotment for lighting improvements and that may be growing as the program becomes more defined?
There is an annual allotment. I don't know if I see it growing, but it will be continuous until we, you know, get, get a good handle on lighting.
And is newer developed areas, are they all lit at sufficient levels? So it's not an area, a problem that we're racing to catch up with?
Yes.
This is really, okay. Great. And then my last question was just appreciated the, the aesthetic treatments shown for 58, 99 interchange. I think we've seen a significant investment in freeway movement through the city, but what's left has been kind of a haphazard at best landscape that is either dying, overplanted, zero planted. And to me, does the city have a goal or a vision as far as a visual consistency for the 58 and the 99 as we move through town?
I don't think we have a spoken goal to do that, but we, we are, you know, trying to do that and to create, creating some consistency with how we develop things. We don't just want to, you know, make spot treatments to, to beautification throughout those corridors. We'll work with, the staff will work with Caltrans to really make sure that the corridors through our city look as best as they can.
Would you like to add a little?
Just to add a little bit to, to what Paul just mentioned, we are in constant communication and collaboration with Caltrans. Perfect example is Hosking. Hosking was funded in part with city money. Caltrans had a project and we partnered with them to come up with what you see out there. And the intent and the direction by council is to look at opportunities like that throughout the 99 corridor and 58. And we have projects that are going to do that. Part of, part of the presentation by, by Paul included the 58, 99 interchange, hardscaping and landscaping. So that's another one that is coming up. And that is the opposite. We are proposing the project and Caltrans is going to contribute funding for that project. So it's a, it's a constant concern and slowly, as always, funding is the issue, but in collaboration with Caltrans, we have better chances of improving our landscaping.
And then I guess one question on that is, as I've noticed the Westside Parkway as it's grown and vintage, there's areas where native shrubs, small bushes have just, have started revegetating. Is the city looking at a policy of just allowing natural habitat to sort of take over? You know, a kind of a brushy, undefined. We kind of have a culture of, of burning our fields and, you know, dirt aesthetic. And seeing it kind of rewild itself to me gives an inspiring look to what could be. Is there any look as far as just promoting growth for more native species to kind of take over?
Not, not really. As a matter of fact, we have also a couple of concept projects on the Westside Parkway from Truckston to Coffee. And again, funding, we have been short on funding, but the first phase of that is 90% design. We don't have funding for construction, but we're again constantly looking for additional funding so that we can go to construction and do, again, something similar to what we did with Hosking, more drought tolerant plants, hardscaping granite, decomposed granite and, and maybe some stamped concrete. But Westside Parkway is five, five miles. So it's going to take a lot of money. Not to blame anyone, but Westside Parkway is now a Caltrans facility. We transferred that to them from all, all the west end Heath all the way to Coffee. So they are maintaining that portion up to a couple of months ago. They were doing a pretty good job, but I have noticed the, the grow of species and I don't know what's going on, but we can certainly check with Caltrans as far as their maintenance on that, on that portion, a portion of the Westside Parkway.
Thank you. And then lastly, because you teased it, Mr. Archer, was the Jastro amphitheater, or not amphitheater, I guess it's technically a bandstand. What would you classify it? I was just curious, the restoration of that project and kind of what, what's the current status?
I do not have that information. That's being headed up by Parks. I can get that for you though, if you'd like.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Thanks again for your presentation. I think you were looking for us to, Ms. King, help me if I fail, but I think we're looking for a nod to compliance with the general plan and a recommendation to move it along to city council.
So your motion would be to adopt a resolution finding that the CIP is consistent with the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan?
That sounds much better. What Mr. Johnson said, may I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Cor, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Strickland. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Maybe a roll call? Oh, never mind. Just a little suspense. Yeah. Great.
Motion passes with Commissioners Bashir Tosh, Vittel, and Neil absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item eight, communications.
Does staff have any communication items?
I do. First, I would like to recognize Courtney Camps. She's an associate planner in our land division section and she's presented to your commission several times, although she's not in the audience this evening. I do know that she is watching this from her desk at work because that's what she does. But this is to recognize her, it's a certificate of appreciation for 25 years of loyal and conscientious service. 25 years. She's with the building department and the planning department. I'd also like to announce that this is Chris Boyle. It's his last planning commission meeting as a city's development services director. His last day is Friday, July 5th, which is one day after his 64th, 65th birthday on July 4th. Yes, July 4th. I get the slide. I know Mr. Boyle has requested time at the podium to recite the Declaration of Independence as his final act in front of your commission. Mr. Boyle, if you'd come down. And since I know you're going to get emotional, we also have provided this slide to keep you focused.
It was the Gettysburg Address.
Thank you, Paul.
Sir.
I suppose you, you know, I don't spend a career planning on what I might say as part of a, a retirement speech, but if I had to say something, it goes something like this. I spent more than 20 years in the craft of public service. Throughout those 20 years, we've, I've experienced five different municipalities and in each one of those, the emphasis was always on exemplary customer service and good governance. More often than not, we got it right. I couldn't say more about the staff and development services that I've had the pleasure of working with in the last five years. It is more about them than it is about me from my perspective. Courtney Kemp should be here receiving a 25-year pin. Ms. Eng was here earlier. I think she's been here longer. Recently, Mr. Haquez took a 15-year pin. Mr. Burns, another individual who's dedicated a lifetime of service. Nay, not a lifetime. He's a lot, he's younger than I am. So I just want to, don't want to throw him under the bus in that fashion. But there's just a fabulous group of individuals that really do, to this day, provide exemplary customer service and good governance to the city, the citizens of Bakersfield, heart of the golden empire, the sound of something better. And for that, I would say thank you for the five years I've had an opportunity to work with you and lead you. That's all I would have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Boyle, we would have got you a certificate, but we know that you are literally living in a van down by Kern River. So we'll get that for you. We didn't want to clutter your van.
Still wearing the suit though, even in the van. Yeah. Dedication.
Also during our last internal staff meeting, Mr. Boyle asked that we not hold a planning commission meeting on his birthday as it would interfere with the city's fireworks show at the park at the River Walk. Every year, we have to remind him that the fireworks are not a celebration of his birthday, but what they are really for. So that said, we will not have a meeting on July 4th. Our next meeting will be July 18th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item nine, commission comments.
Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Coleman. Oh, Commissioner Cor. Is that from before?
No.
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Cor. She beat Commissioner Coleman.
I just want to say thank you for your service and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman.
Yeah, I was going to say this is similar. Mr. Boyle, thank you very much for your service here. I learned a lot from you, especially regarding the housing element. And I, I'm sure that after you leave Bakersfield, you'll wake up in the middle of the night thinking about the housing element. So anyway, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioner Coleman, you kind of stole my thunder because I was going to say, you shocked me tonight. I will not hear you on a presentation with zoning ordinances, height modifications, or that map of Ming and Newstein ever again. That's very, I got to deal with that loss in my life. But thank you for the many years we've gotten to work together. I thank you for your contributions to the city. You will be missed. I hope the, the van looks well situated. You look like you're ready for to take on anything in the world. So cheers to your next adventure. And also thank you from, to Ms. Camp for 25 years of service. What a, what an achievement as well. Seeing no additional comments from the commission, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item 10, adjournment.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:36. Have a great evening, everyone.